I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, would you please take role?
Yes. Councilmember Raditz is not here. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Lasky?
Here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Keck?
Here.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Roska?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
EPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Community development director?
Here.
Police chief?
Here.
And city engineer?
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens Council related items. Buddy? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, notification regarding Tuesday's, Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Laura, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. Consideration of approving the purchase of a single axle plow truck. The city of Manistee has received quotes from MIA deal vendors for the purchase of a single ax- axle plow truck to replace a two thousand and six truck. D and K Trucking Company has quoted one fifty-one, five seventy-nine for the cab and chassis. Truck and Trailer Specialties has quoted one oh-three, one twenty-eight for the equipment package and outfitting. A total purchase price of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven. At this time, council could take action to approve quotes from D and K Trucking Company and Truck and Trailer Specialties for the purchase of a single axle plow truck. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Go second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Have the DPW mechanics reviewed the specs of that truck?
Absolutely. These trucks are actually custom made per order. So when we sit down, our mechanic sits down with the salesman from the trucking company and we walk through, I think I included in your packet, it's probably twenty.
It's.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so they go through and everything is customized. This is very, this is a single axle. It's one of our main plow trucks. So we have purchased two of those in the past five years. This essentially has the same specifications as those previous two.
So then it's a five-year finance? Because it said it was being financed?
Yeah, so typically what Mr. Bradford will do is on larger purchases like this, as opposed to paying cash out of the motor pool, he competitively bids out the financing of those from local financial institutions and then we take the best rates and then borrow the money against that. And then we've got it slotted in the motor pool for those annual payments over that five years.
Okay, two more questions.
Sure.
It said a temporary steel bumper. I take it that so you can drive it to get the rest of the truck put together?
So.
I was like, what's that?
Fair question. So when the, when the, when the truck's manufactured, the cab and chassis, it's basically the cab and the engine, transmission, back wheels, and then you just have a flat frame on the back of that.
There's a picture.
When it goes to the equipment outfitter, the normal steel truck, or the normal bumper on it and the gas tanks don't work with the plowing equipment because we have hydraulic hoists on the front for the big wing plows. And then even like the gas tanks that are mounted on the side, they're actually really temporary because our gas tanks are squares stainless steel tanks that fit behind the cab. So those come off when they go to the equipment outfitter.
Last question.
Mm-hmm.
It said non-corrosive heavy-duty body. Is that like a heavy-duty hard plastic?
No.
It's, what is?
It's steel, but I believe it's treated.
So it doesn't.
Vainly and treated, yes.
Okay.
And, and I will, I will tell you, they will rust. They all.
Okay, that's the problem I ran into too.
Yeah.
So that's why I was curious.
But they're dipped and coated at the plant, yeah.
Yeah, it's a problem. First truck I ever bought like this, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do those, the box, you got them under? I noticed a lot of people were telling me that they look at it, they think it's aluminum. And they said when the trucks come up the road, it seems like they bounce, they don't have much weight.
They're, they're actually stainless steel. And then there's a liner in the box that's more mild steel that handles abrasions and impacts when we load it with rocks and things like that. We've switched to the stainless bodies, the rims and the boxes themselves because they don't corrode, they last a lot longer. All the yellow, yellow ones that you see, our welder and fabricator has had to cut large portions off, re-weld new stuff on, rewire them because the corrosion is severe. So we believe we'll get more and longer life out of these.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Laura, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, PEG Commission and Tree Commission. Mayor and manor appointments require a motion, second and council voted support. Nominations for council point do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority of support. The following applications, I just want to note, when you make a nomination to state their name and the term for them. Board of Review, two vacancies, one-term alternate member ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six and one-term regular member ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Purpose here is property value appeals council appointment. Mary Kawalski Willam, four twenty-one Cedar Street. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Mary Kawalski Willam.
For the.
To the Board of Review.
For the regular term?
For the regular term.
Okay. Ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Laura, would you please take role?
So when we call.
I'm sorry, when you call, when they, when she calls your names, just state the last name of the person. Sorry about that.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Willham.
Councilmember Lasky?
Willham.
Mayor Sullivan?
Willham.
Councilmember Keck?
Willham.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Willham.
Councilmember Roska?
Willham.
You. Historic District Commission, two vacancies, one-term ending two twenty-eight twenty-five and one-term ending two twenty-eight twenty-seven. Purpose Historic Preservation Council Appointment. Scott Lorraine, seventy-one Oak Street. Is there a nomination?
I'll go ahead and nominate Scott Lorraine, seventy-one Oak Street for the term ending eight, or check that, two twenty-eight twenty-seven.
Okay, Laura, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Uh, Lorraine.
Councilmember Lasky?
Lorraine.
Mayor Sullivan?
Lorraine.
Councilmember Keck?
Lorraine.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Lorraine.
Councilmember Roska?
Lorraine.
Thank you. PEG Commission, two vacancies, one-term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-five and one-term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Purpose Overseas Operation of Manistee Public Access Council Appointment. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Barry Lynn, five thirty-two Forest Street for the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven on the PEG Commission.
Laura, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Lynn.
Councilmember Lasky?
Lynn.
Mayor Sullivan?
Lynn.
Councilmember Keck?
Lynn.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Lynn.
Councilmember Roska?
Lynn.
Thank you. Is there another nomination?
I'll go ahead and nominate Ms. Alyssa Strickle, two ninety-seventh Street for the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Laura, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Stickle.
Councilmember Lasky?
Stickle.
Mayor Sullivan?
Stickle.
Councilmember Keck?
Stickle.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Stickle.
Councilmember Roska?
Stickle.
Thank you. Tree Commission, two vacancies, term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Purpose Overseas Public Parks Boulevard's Tree Program Merrill Appointment. I would like to nominate Vidar Liram, four forty-five Cedar Street to the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Support?
Four forty-five. Support that.
Laura, would you please take role?
I'm sorry, who is the support from?
What, uh, Pro Tem Smith?
Thank you. Councilmember Raditz. Uh, Liram has been nominated.
Oh, yes.
Liram. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Liram.
Councilmember Lasky?
Liram.
Mayor Sullivan?
Liram.
Councilmember Keck?
Liram.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Liram.
Councilmember Roska?
Liram.
Thank you. I would also like to nominate Gerald Haw, four twenty-one Second Street to the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Go second.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz?
Haw.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Haw.
Councilmember Lasky?
Haw.
Mayor Sullivan?
Haw.
Councilmember Keck?
Haw.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Haw.
Councilmember Roska?
Haw.
Thank you. Consideration of committee appointments. At this time, mayor could take action to make various council appointments. So alternatives for area youth, Mr. Smith. The Audit Committee, Roska, Mr. Gabowski, Ms. Lasky. Local Revenue Sharing Board, Mr. Gabowski. MRA Board, Mr. Smith. The nine-one-one Authority Board is Chief Glass. Oil and Gas Investment Board, Ms. Lasky. Ordnance Committee, Ms. Keck, Sullivan and Ms. Raditz. Neighborhood and Restoration Beautification Committee, Ms. Lasky. Sands Park Control Board, Ms. Roska and Utilities Committee, Mr. Gabowski. Is there a motion to support these appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Go second.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, city manager could take action to appoint, to make appointments to the council personnel committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Mayor Sullivan, Councilmember Raditz and Councilmember Keck.
Is there a motion of support for the manager's appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Laura, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have a discussion on the CP twenty-five tax incentives from Andrew Stafford and Mr. Bradford and Mr. Gamble.
All right, when this is getting set up, the congratulations to the new city council members. I'm really looking forward to see what city council can do over the next year. For those who maybe don't remember me, I'm Andrew Stafford, the Director of Economic Development with the Chamber of Commerce. And really the intention of this presentation is to prepare for next meeting. At the next city council meeting, you will have a city tax incentive policy put in front of you. The current city tax incentive policy was written back in ninety-nine and is outdated and it's definitely overdue for some revamping, if you will. So this is to really get us all on the same page for what is a tax incentive? How has the city used them in the past? And then what are the benefits of using a tax incentive, you know, in our community? Is it necessary? Is it not necessary? And just sparking that discussion. And I know when we talk about tax incentives, it can be a politically charged discussion, if you will. So this is just to start kind of giving background information to council members. And I will be available for any further questions, as well as Ed Bradford is a great resource to have. You know, he knows all the ins and outs of, you know, what the city has to do to really get a project, a incentive. And he does a lot of legwork to make that happen, so. Uh, but we'll just get right into it. So I normally don't read from slides, but this definition of a tax incentive was so well put together and I think it encapsulates really multiple dimensions of a tax incentive. So tax incentives are financial benefits offered by governments to encourage certain behaviors, investments or developments that align with economic or policy goals. These incentives take various forms such as tax credits, deductions, exemptions or reduced tax rates. Tax incentives are designed to make specific activities more affordable or appealing, benefiting both entities receiving the incentive and the broader community by promoting growth and innovation. So kind of put simply, it is really just a tool for our community to use to encourage the creation of jobs and encourage outside investment in people to really come to our community. And on the bottom of this slide, you'll see a number of tax policy or tax incentives that have been leveraged in the past by the city. And I'm not going to walk through each and every one because everyone has its own nuances and complexities to it. But just know that these are created out of state legislation. And each legislation, it outlines the purpose and intent of these policies, right? Whether it's to eliminate blight or encourage industrial expansion. Each one kind of comes with its own set of requirements and its own incentive, you know, with different lengths in different forms, you know, whether it's a abatement, an exemption or a tax credit. So some of the past projects that have leveraged tax incentives here in Manistee are the Hampton Inn, Friconos, the Outsider, Hillcrest Apartments, you know, Fablight. These projects, we can kind of assume would not have happened but for the tax incentive, right? When we start using tax incentives, there's a but-for test which requires that we do our due diligence and make sure that this project can't happen unless this incentive is applied. And when you review this list of these projects that have taken place over the last five, ten years, these are probably some of the most substantial real estate projects we've seen in the community. And that really goes to show the impact that this can have in kind of moving our community forward. Because imagine if we didn't have Hillcrest Apartments for affordable housing, right? If we didn't have the New Hampton Inn that was driving employment in visitor, visitor spending here in Manistee. So one that I really want to highlight is the Friconos project. That's kind of the poster child for Oprah or Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. And what that is, is it allows the community to freeze the value of a property for up to twelve years. And through this investment, if, for those who can remember, that property just sat vacant for several years and was really falling into disrepair and was underutilized. And the individual who came in and invested in that property had to invest over a million dollars, you know, with land acquisition and then with the renovations. And when we talk about business decisions in making financial decisions, they have to make sense, right? People are not going to come into our community and invest their dollars into our community if it doesn't make financial sense, right? And there are a number of properties that I'm pretty sure we can all think of that have been legacy problems for our community, right? Where they have sat vacant, underutilized, with no activity on them for five, ten, twenty years. And when we start talking about who's going to invest in those properties and what's going to happen to those properties, the longer they sit, the more likely they are to be demoed because the harder it becomes to make a project make financial sense. And so with Friconos, the Oprah allowed them to make financial sense of a building that was a heavy lift financially for that individual because the return on investment just wasn't there with the original numbers if you did not put it within a tax incentive. So by providing them with a tax incentive, not only did we encourage that a million-dollar investment into our downtown, we also created an entity that provided our community with twenty-five jobs. And that's really one of the benefits of being able to leverage some of these incentives. So when we, kind of, we just talked about it in the slide prior, but some of the benefits of using incentives is it allows outside investment, right? Other communities are using them in kind of what I mentioned. It's really hard to get investment into our community if it doesn't make financial sense. And with the age of the building and with our real estate market being slightly lower than other northern Michigan communities, what's to say I don't take my million-dollar investment into Charlevoix or Boynton City or somewhere else that's comparable that would have a quicker return on investment? So being competitive, being able to attract that, those outside investments and even internal investments, right? Just making a, maybe somebody here in the community wants to invest in a property and wants it to make financial sense for them and that they're actually having a return. You know, that this is one way we can do that. And in, with new investment comes job growth and revitalization of underused areas and also growing the tax base, you know, upfront. You are sacrificing some tax capture or just give, lowering the amount of taxes that you would be capturing otherwise. However, in the long run, the growth from a project taking place on a property that hadn't seen investment in twenty years and hasn't been doing much for the tax base. I mean, a lot of the projects that you're looking at, they weren't generating that much taxes to begin with. So when you talk about, oh, we're losing out on taxes, it doesn't normally have the biggest impact on the tax roll. But going to the new city tax incentive policy update that's coming down the pipe, I won't actually get into the nitty-gritties of it. I will say that, you know, Bill Gamble and Ed Bradford and myself have put it together and tried to align it with the city's current priorities and goals and objectives. But some of the reasons we really do need to focus on having a new tax policy is to keep us competitive. We want to make sure that our policy is giving us the tools we need that are comparable to other communities as well as making sure we're, you know, protecting ourselves as a city and making sure we're doing our due diligence on the front end of projects that are asking for tax incentives, making sure we're going through developers' finances and making sure that, hey, is there an actual need here? And making sure that we have a policy that states that so we know. And that kind of bleeds into the second point, that standardizing the process makes it much easier for the developer themselves and then also the people who are having to do the legwork, which is, you know, in large part, Ed Bradford and Bill and myself, where, you know, it makes it easy when we can turn to a document and say, okay, this is how we're going to handle an Oprah. And having a document that we can give to developers that outlines that process gives them more comfort coming into a community, understanding, hey, there's a process in place. We know what's going to happen. This isn't, you know, just gonna all of a sudden take a left turn and we didn't know about it. There's, there's a formal process, you know exactly what you're getting into when you're coming into our community and potentially asking for an incentive. And then finally, just having that new tax policy, tax incentive policy just helps us make sure that all the internal policies of the city are in lockstep with, you know, new master plans and new trends that we're seeing, whether it's housing or childcare, making sure that that policy is outlining, hey, we're prioritizing housing projects because that's a crisis right now. So that's just some of the, the main points that I have. But yeah, I'll definitely leave you with this, that when we talk about tax incentives, it's definitely not a property owner's right. It is a privilege for a tax break or an exemption or rebate. It is by no means a, a thing that should be handled lightly and nor every project should be awarded a tax incentive. However, with that being said, we do have a lot of projects in our community that do not make financial sense unless you incentivize them, just given the state of our community. And that's something we need to be cognizant of when we go on and have further discussion about the tax incentives and how they're used and when they're used. So are there any questions? That was kind of just to spur some thought and kind of get ready for, for next meeting. And that's all for me.
I think, I think it's good that you're doing this. I, when you sent out the document and it says, you know, the very opening thing is like ninety-eight, ninety-nine. I thought, ooh, to a developer, it has to be like, haven't you done anything since ninety-eight? So I appreciate that you do bring this up to date, so I think that's a good thing.
That was one of my questions when I saw the documents. So you're going to give this to the developer, it's for them really, and we follow it as well, so I like that.
Would there, would this standardization and transparency for developers, would it help them access other funds at the state level or?
So from, for a state standpoint, for the state, for certain grants, for example, with the MEDC, they want to see local buy-in.
Okay.
In, in one way that they see that is by the local unit of government supporting the project through an incentive of sorts, you know, by, by working with that developer. If they're doing in a functionally obsolete property, make, you know, awarding that Oprah is one way to, for a local unit of government to show that they are on board with the project and supporting that project. So in that way, it helps from the state standpoint. From a transparency standpoint, I don't know necessarily if, if that's going to support state funding. Definitely having a process in place where a developer can feel more confident about getting awarded an incentive and say, hey, I know that the project I'm working on, the investment amount that I'm, I'm doing, all fall in line with what this city has awarded in the past. That, that will definitely kind of give comfort to them. And it's really not until the incentive's given, you know, or in writing in some shape or form that you're kind of helping the developer get more state funding per se.
And just as an example, so that Commercial Rehabilitation Act incentive that we provided to the Hampton Inn, they did eventually, the MEDC granted a final loan that helped bring it. So as Andrew said, it really, it helps that they see support at the local level. And then I think that does open some possibilities for state funding later when it's the ninth hour, but.
So Andrew, this is really about making Manistee very easy to see that this is a great place to develop. The city is looking for development. The city is helping create a pathway for funding, especially for blighted properties. And, and through that, a mechanism through state funding too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Liz, you, you're right, this, it hasn't been touched, I liked the year nineteen ninety-nine. I don't know if Andrew was alive.
He's not, he was one year off.
Oh, and that hurt, that hurt a little bit. But I mean, that speaks to what developers are looking. They don't, maybe they don't want to invest in a place that is attracting builders from nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, uh, thank you for the presentation, it was really easy to understand.
Yep, and let, just if you have any questions, you can follow up with my contact information. So feel free to reach out and I'm happy to have longer discussions, one-on-one if need be. So just feel free to contact me.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'll just add a.
You're making us feel old, Andrew.
Couple of quick things, so you have the new draft tax incentive policy. As Andrew stated, we're looking to bring that back at the next meeting. So if you have any suggestions or comments, please email myself, Andrew, and yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I can, I don't know, this is my method.
Sorry, I, usually I didn't see you, go ahead.
So at the next meeting, we will have an opportunity to read this at home and have to bring questions at that time?
You can, or you can send it ahead of time if you want some changes. So it's in the packet right now, so it's, it's public. You can let us know what, you know, what your thoughts are.
And we have the revised one before the next meeting or the?
Um, so I guess we could say if you can get it to myself and Andrew by Friday and Ed or something like that, maybe for us to make the changes, I could send it out ahead of time. We just need to set a date for.
This draft policy, and forgive me if I, if I missed this, where did this draft policy come from? Has our city attorney reviewed it? Where, where is it on the step to come before us?
So, yeah, I guess the main thing is we've been getting some feedback from the chamber and also developers. It is something where we want people to feel comfortable that we offer incentives and here's kind of the criteria. And it was just kind of looking at our old policies and kind of drafting between what we currently offer, looking at the old policy, what is obsolete, what we don't offer anymore, and then kind of meshing it with kind of our format. So it was kind of using that old policy format as a template to show what we currently offer. Couple of things, this was kind of also an opportunity to introduce the fact that the Olsons property, you'll see in your packet that there was a letter springtime that they asked about a Housing Facilities Act. We were kind of asking if they were interested. So we saw that as an opportunity to kind of put this into this new policy, that that's something we could offer. And just like with the Commercial Rehabilitation Act, we review that with the attorney first. So this is kind of the first step, we'll, we're looking at that, adding that to the policy. We'll go through the steps, we'll inform council how that one works. The other ones, we also, the DDA passed a recommendation that'll be coming before council at some point. We'll have the attorney review that, but they want to increase the amount of items that are eligible for brownfield reimbursement, the downtown area for housing and things like that. So to meet the objectives of the DDA plan. So really, it's just, there's a lot of things we're trying. So really, it's just, there's a lot of things, um, we're trying to educate the, the new council and and the current council members about, but it's, it's definitely time to update that, that policy.
So really, this is, we're at the beginning of that process, looking at the former one, using that as a template, looking at the things that are going to align with the D D A and other initiatives, so that we're making sure that our, our new, our, our discussion and our dialogue is fitting all the pieces.
Mm-hmm.
And then from there, it'll go back and be refined and our attorney will take a look at it. And so is there a timeline that's attached to this with the D D A? Is this, I, I'm just unfamiliar, the sense of urgency surrounding this.
Um, so we do, we're going through our, we're part of the redevelopment-ready community, so.
Okay.
One of the things, you know, we're, we're posting our current tax incentive policy from 1999, we want to update that, so that's kind of our motivation. Also, it's, it's just due to be updated, so that's kind of, but I think that would be the first step. And then we'll start bringing those other items forward, like the, the Housing Facilities Act incentive, if we're going to do that over at the Olson's property.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll be bringing the D D A one after that goes through the um, the attorney's office.
So there's some things that need attention right away.
Yeah, I think this is the good base level and then we kind of build on it with the the projects.
Did you have a question? I just had a question, is it normal that, like on the Olson property, it seemed like this, he was interested maybe in selling that, that the seller was asking for the, some incentive, or is it normally the developer, or is there, is he going to develop it? I thought normally the developer goes for asking for the incentive because it definitely would make the property probably more sellable, but didn't the council prior to me being on, or wasn't there a little bit of a, a couple of the properties, we granted the incentive and then they didn't fulfill it? It was, it, if it goes with the property or does it go with the uh?
And I'll let, I'm going to start answering, but Andrew, you can fill in the, the gaps. But each incentive is a little bit different. So with the Housing Facilities Act, um, the, over 50% of the, you designate a district and over 50% of the property owners in that district have to request it. In this case, he owns all of them. But that's similar with the Commercial Rehabilitation District with the Hampton, they own the property. The Oprah is kind of different where, you know, it's, there's kind of a timeline with it, you set up a district, but it's one, it can be one individual smaller property. Um, so it just depends on what incentive they're looking at, how it's written in the act about who needs to request it or the options of who requests it.
Yeah, and Bill, Bill pretty much covered it. It's, it really comes down to the legislation that the incentive is based off of, because some do require, I'm pretty sure with Oprah, has to have investment or like revitalization occur after a two-year period, it has a window that investment has to take place or that it's an all-in void. I mean, and to, to your point on, you know, the prior council had awarded incentives that kind of went belly up, you know, that's kind of the nature of the beast when you are trying to encourage investment and revitalization on some really tough pieces of property that not every project is going to go through. And that's, you know, it, it's a reminder that we have to be, do our due diligence and doing our research into who's doing the development, you know, how is their, their plans looking, you know, do they seem like they have the financial backing to actually execute a project of the scope that they're suggesting? Um, so we're not, you know, just going around willy-nilly, giving everybody an incentive, but it also should discourage us from saying, oh, okay, we can't give any because, you know, we had three projects go belly up. It's like, okay, there, it takes a long time and maybe multiple developers to continue to just keep pushing and chopping out a property to eventually kind of have the stars aligned and actually get everything in place where that project can go through, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two things to what Andrew said, had this policy that we have drafted, been in place, some of those projects probably wouldn't have made it through the cut, never would have been granted the incentive, first of all. And second of all, um, they're probably going to require a development agreement with every tax incentive, which we, we normally do it with brownfields, but not the other ones. But development agreement will also give the city more protection. Those two are real key aspects of the, of the policy.
Good.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities or other areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Everybody? Uh, Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to invite Sean Middleton up, um, we wanted to give an update on the Riverwalk E D A grant for the South Riverwalk. This has been kind of an ongoing project, this is our um third round of bidding it and we're kind of nearing the end of the timeline, but I, I wanted to kind of go over for the new council members and the public about why we're, why we are where we are with this one. Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, council members. For you that don't know me, uh, my name is Sean Middleton, a city engineer. I live at 302 River Street and, or live at 558 First Street and work at 302 River Street. They do kind of combine some.
He might have been right.
Yeah. Yeah, so similar to Andrew, we, um, we are under, we've got a little bit with our E D A grant to bring it to council in two weeks. And so Bill called me yesterday and said it'd be a good idea to bring everybody up to speed, and I can share this PowerPoint with everyone when we're done, so you can have that. Um, so I'm going to review, especially for newer council members, a pretty complex project and federal grant that we've been going through for about a year and a half. And I'm just kind of be like speed dating here, we're going to, I'm going to move through very quickly, give you this big picture of the, of the timelines, I think it's important to understand where we're at today and why we're doing some of the things we're doing. So I'm going to walk you through that. Um, you can definitely interrupt me if you need to, but I'll just kind of push through, there'll be details that probably need to get filled in and questions, and then just, then at the end, we can have a discussion on where we're headed and what some of our next steps are, so. So we can go to the, oh, I guess the. Okay, so E D A Riverwalk grant is, um, you know, it's basically obviously focused on one of our key assets in the community for tourism in our community. And this kind of came about because there's an opportunity with the grant and the Riverwalk is degrading, it's aging, it's probably between 30 and 40 years old in the sections we're looking at. There's two different projects that happened. Uh, the extensive, the original grant, the limits were basically from the very east end of the Riverwalk, which is east of U S 31, down to the Marina. So there is more work to be done as you go farther west, um, to the section that we worked on four or five years ago with the, the bank stabilization. So, but this is Marina to the east is where our original submittal was, and I say original because we've had to modify this as we move through it. Um, we're also seeing a need for additional ADA accessibility between River Street and the Riverwalk, uh, some wayfinding sign improvements, kind of a small item, but uh, you know, it was kind of an issue with, we can't simply go out and clean the Riverwalk because of chemicals that are in it. Eagle doesn't really care for that, especially next, next to a water body, it's full of a old chemicals that aren't in new building materials, you know, new treated lumber would not have those materials on it. So I'm going to focus on the timeline here. Um, so we, uh, Bill approached me, this is quite a while ago, April, June of 2022, about this grant, it's a federal grant, Economic Development Administration. Uh, we prepared our application, we submitted, we were awarded a grant for hundred, for $850,000. And at the time, we have um had $240,000 in match from basically the D D A slash Westshore Community College. Um, so it was an original project estimate of $1 million. At that time, um, we prepared the grant, so we couldn't do the engineering, there was an R F P for engineering services, an engineer came on board, started some preliminary engineering work, uh, geotechnical and some upfront work through October and December of '22. Um, during that process, the engineer, uh, we ended up changing that, we actually came on board, it's Spicer Group, and we're working kind of outside the grant with our normal E P R process with the city, as your engineer of record. And with that, we started really working on the design process. And so October of '20 through '23 to through April of '24, we had two things going in parallel, a lot of design work, um, getting plans and specifications together. And then another item, which is just another complication of this grant, is we had to do a site certification, where we had to show ownership of all the properties along the Riverwalk, which doesn't sound that complicated, but it's turned out to be quite complicated process. Uh, so we spent that time doing that, working with um city council, uh, attorney and getting that approved. Um, in that time, we had, we did do an update to council back in March of 19th of 2024. Uh, Jeff and the D P W kind of working with Parks Commission probably were hearing parts about this, you know, different snap, you know, kind of snippets, I guess. And we're working actively with D D A and Westshore Community College, especially about a year ago, and we met as needed. Um, we got through the, that process with site certification and and bids, there's a large E D A checklist we had to go through in April '24, we were approved to advertise in May 13th of 2024, and we had our first bid opening on the project on June 14th of 2024, and we received no bids. Um, and it isn't without trying, because we, E D A actually are very, uh, put a lot of pressure on us and how we advertise and how we pursue and the builders exchange. So we, this thing hit the streets all over and we didn't get any bids. So we immediately went to the plan holder, kind of plan holders and said, what's up? What's going on here? Um, and the main thing was the short construction window, because our original grant was in place with a construction schedule that had required us to be done by December of '24. So a very tight schedule, and there's a lot of multiple trades, so it requires a general contractor, kind of construction manager to, to corral all these subs. And so it was complicated to get done in the window and that was the main reason. So we went back to E D A and our project manager and talked about what we should do to rebid it. Um, the main thing is we got an extension on the date for construction. Um, and we also started having this, this discussion about trades. So we rebid the project in September of 2025. Um, and then with the September of 2025 completion date, it was actually July 26th, 2024, we bid it. So we received two bids, that was good news. Bad news, low bid was $3.5 million. Um, so needless to say, that was very eye-opening, uh, we had a lot of conversations with, with the contractors, with E D A, kind of get a sense, is this something you're seeing in other places? There was a sense of high bids coming across the country. Our state in particular has been, with the ARPA funding, had a lot of, a lot of parks and rec projects. Um, there's 200 state projects that are in the hopper right now, just to give you a sense of uh what's going on with contractors. They're doing a lot of work for the state of Michigan on state parks and things like that, let alone other ARPA funds going to counties and cities. So a lot of competition, this multiple, this multiple trades issue hit home here. So what we had, what happened was, these guys that bid, uh, two good contractors, large contractors bid it, but their G M, their construction manager, general contracting costs, it's kind of hard to weed that out, were definitely in the neighborhood of well over a half million to well over a million dollars. Just, you know, kind of, that's just on top of everything. Um, and then we had the, um, the Marina ADA Access Boardwalk that was designed, was designed as a boardwalk, so we could have kind of a nice consistent grade, it was above grade, we could have a nice smooth slope all the way down. Um, and we could do that because we weren't kind of trying to work with the existing ground, but that was very expensive. Um, we, that was pointed out in the design process or the, or the bidding process. We had an observation deck that was kind of in the project, um, that was in there, it was also pretty costly with some amenities that were associated with it. And then another big item was, um, in discussions with the D D A, uh, we had originally done our estimating on a composite or PVC material, like we did on the very west end of the Riverwalk. If you've walked that section where we did the work, um, it's, it's PVC decking, and that's what we, we went in using. As we got into this process, there's a lot of discussion about, do we want to use plastic? It had, there's some burnout marks in it that were done. Um, and so we started leaning towards wood and, um, and especially with our timber industry as a background, it's kind of one of the reasons it went that way. And the D D A had some suggestions of, of kind of some high-end woods, like there's, I think originally it was called E-Pay, I'm not very familiar with this, but a very high-end product. We looked at it, found it very quickly, that was too expensive, but we kind of found another one, it's called Kebony. It's, we bid the project, um, with this Kebony material and uh very durable, long-lasting, uh, but came inexpensive. And you'll see as we go on, we've had some other iterations I'll talk through. So all those things are drivers on cost. We went back to the driver, the drawing board, um, and basically what we decided to do, let's bid out five different contracts, not have a G M or a, a C M or a G C on this project. In essence, the engineer is going to take that role, we're going to have to manage it during construction, the different disciplines and where the working schedules and things like that, and we have to set up the contracts that way. So we took that component out of it by bidding five different sections. Uh, we bid the Westshore Community College overlook as an alternate. Um, the Marina access was converted to a sidewalk that was placed at grade, so it's still doing the same thing, but it's at grade and it has landings. So it's a little steeper, but it has landings, but still meets ADA, and so it's still ADA accessible. Um, we looked at a different Kebony uh product that was down a level, it's still a good product, but wasn't quite the one we originally bid, it's called Character. And then we also bid standard treated lumber as an alternate. And then removed several alternates, um, we had on the, uh, in the proposal that we knew we just weren't going to be able to deal with the, with the pricing. So we advertised these projects in September, October, and we rebid those, um, fairly recently. So on October 25th, we had the structural improvements component of the project was bid, we had one bid received, uh, low bid was $294,000, that was higher than we had estimated. And so we've been working with the E D A and the contractor on some, what we call value engineering. There's some things, we talked to the contractor that we, you know, maybe if we design it different or do it a little different, could save some costs and um some items that we can potentially take out there. So that, that structural item, what it really is, is the switchback that's towards the east end, uh, by the barber shop, that parking area, if you can picture that. At the very base of it, that thing has been, uh, it's actually been sliding into the river, the whole thing, well, at least the bottom portion, has been slipping into the river. And if you look closer, you'll see that it's pushed up one of the walls and it shoved right into the Riverwalk, which is designed to be independent of that, and it's shoving it over. So what we're going to do is get in between that, we're going to drive sheets and let that load transfer to the sheets and then free that load on the Riverwalk. So we're not doing a lot of work on the switchback, that's a very expensive item in itself, but we're going to separate the, where we, uh, the Riverwalk is from the swi- switchbacks and take that load off it. Um, so that's that component, so we're going to look at reducing costs there. We have a small electrical component, um, which is basically putting L E D lights in. Um, that bid was 7,200, low bid, it's top line. Uh, landscaping, we received one bid, uh, this was also a high bid from what, from our perspective at least. Um, and so what we looked at here was, we're looking at a reduction in scope, and I'll talk a little bit about what our final scope is, um, in talking to the contractor and E D A about that. E D A is open to all these ideas and maintaining our funding, we still got to prove some things to them, and the contractors and our discussions have been open to working with on costs with some of these. Site development, that's the boardwalk component, uh, that's a very big part of the project. Um, the bids came in about a million, a little over a million dollars, two bids were received. And um, again, we're looking at ways we can save costs, one of them I'm going to discuss is actually going back to the treated lumber alternate, um, on the project to save money. And then finally, there's a, there was a, a painting division, uh, which is basically rails, all the rails and light poles. And um, so it's light sanding and painting, it's not, it's not full-blown clean-to-paint, redo them, uh, it's, it's basically some sanding of rusted areas, getting those cleaned up and repainting. So all those numbers added together, um, with a base bid, and this is with Kebony, is basically $1.9 million. The, the alternate we bid with treated lumber is, was basically a D dock, and that would pull the contract down to about $1.6 million. Some of the value engineering things I was discussing, again, there's a lot of detail in there, but big picture, trying to reduce those, we think we're, we could take about $350,000 off the project, which will pull us down into this $1.25 million range on construction, on the construction part of this project. So that 1.25 mil- million, uh, some of the major changes on that are, is the project would go from the west property limits of the Gateway Project, would kind of the very east end would be taken out of the project. Uh, so there was some uh boardwalk work that'd be done in the east end, we're taking it out. We're going, we're going to be talking with the Gateway Project, maybe potentially that could be rolled into some of their grant funding to do that work, and/or talking with M dot and a TAP grant, which is associated with sidewalks and pedestrian traffic. Um, so we're looking at some options to, to backfill that, but that, that end of it, that piece was taken out. And so the scope then is basically remove and replace existing deck boards using treated lumber. If we could find some funding to upgrade, there is one option we were also received from a contractor was, it's still treated lumber, but it's a higher-end product where they, they cut- it's still treated lumber, but it's a higher-end product where they, they cut grooves in the bottom to prevent cupping. And then they basically chamfer all the edges, so it's just got a little cleaner look to it. So it's, but that was a hundred thousand dollars just for that change and it's still treated lumber. So everything about this is expensive. Replacing, so paint, I mentioned paint railings, replacing light bulbs with LEDs on the lights. Constructing that ADA accessibility at the Marina. There will be, I don't, I didn't list it here, but there will be wayfinding signage and some historical, like kind of informative signing that'll be on the project, so it'll be in there. And then West Shore Community College, we're looking at, a lot of different options were kicked around there. In the end, what we, we're looking at doing is we're going to be doing, we call it an outdoor classroom, but it could be used for somebody playing an instrument. And it would be right in front of West Shore, kind of tucked into that hill. It'd be a half-moon kind of concrete block seating where you could have an outdoor classroom or somebody could play music there. And just kind of set into that, that slope there. And then there'd be landscaping down around that. And then the structural repairs, which I, which I mentioned. So that's kind of a very quick and dirty view, but that's the big picture on the scope. Just kind of a sense of the limits of the work. So it's hard to see it there, but all those hatched areas in the top view are where the board, the boards are. There's, there was eighteen thousand square feet in the original proposal, that's reduced now. But there's an immense amount of boards out there if you really start looking at it. And that's why it adds up so fast. In the bottom, on the bottom left is a depiction of how the sidewalk would come out in between the butterfly gardens. There would be some signage there, there would be ADA accessibility off the road. And then that would be at a slope that allows for wheelchair ADA access all the way down. We had some discussion on maybe having a couple of bump outs for viewing over the harbor under those trees there. And then on the right, it's just, this was actually just a rendering of it, but that's in front of the college, kind of give you a sense of where that kind of outdoor classroom would be in the. So the overall cost on the project, because there, there are, there is the engineering component to it and then there's the grant funding. And went through this today with the city. A lot of this, we came, you know, we kind of pulled things together pretty fast because we just got some of the final Thanksgiving. So the construction anticipated costs at one point two-five million. The preliminary engineering work, thirty grand, I think I had forty grand listed on the previous slide, but it's thirty. Results in one point two-eight. There's the design engineering costs that we had and some anticipated construction manager, construction engineering costs going forward. So that kind of puts a total project cost at about one point five oh three million dollars. We kind of worked in a contingency, we don't, you know, there's always unknowns of eighty-seven thousand, puts it at one point five nine. And then we subtracted out the grant, which kind of puts us in a hole of about a half million dollars still after all that. There are costs that have been paid to date in previous, you know, current fiscal year, previous fiscal years of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So even though the overall project's about a half million still in the hole, there's probably three hundred and thirty-seven, and if you don't count contingency or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in essence, that we're short. That we need additional funding or a fund balance to cover. And that's really what we're going to be coming to, I guess, next two weeks to council with. There are other things we can look into. One of the things that's kind of pushing us a little bit to finish up on this last slide and the next steps when we can talk about it is, so we're continuing to coordinate and meet, you know, we're going to meet with DDA, West Shore Community College, even the community foundation having discussions on potential funding. Those will continue to happen in the next couple of weeks and into next year. We're working with the contractors in these value engineering reductions, getting them shored up. You know, the real, one of the reasons we need to commit to this funding now is we are shortening the window on construction, but also in conversations with our project manager is with the change in leadership, with the presidential election, he did not rule out that come January, February, you know, funding could be pulled. Because we don't, he just, he didn't say for sure, but he just said, I'm not going to rule it out. So if you can obligate funds, we recommend you kind of get on your horse and do that. So we were trying to push it anyways, but that was a little bit more kicking the pants, I guess, for us to at least consider that there's a chance that if these aren't obligated or, you know, we could be at risk of losing the grant. So, and that's out of our hands, obviously. So we'll be working with the EDA, there's a lot of things to do, get this actually out, get grants awarded and get to the point where we can start collecting reimbursements. We had to work through the sole source bids on a few of these projects, the scope reduction, awarding the contract to the EDA. As I mentioned, you know, right now, we're talking the December seventeenth meeting, coming back to council. If needed, I think we could look at, you know, early January. We get a little nervous about pushing it too far regarding some of those issues with the, with the election. So I covered a lot there. It's been a long year and a half, it's been quite frustrating at times, quite honestly, between bidding and working with this federal grant, which is complicated. So I open it up to questions, I don't know if I have anything else on this.
Can you email this to all of us?
Yeah, absolutely. I know it's a lot to digest. I just, we just wanted to get in front of you and I kind of threw a lot of it together quick, but.
Is September of twenty-five realistic that this would be complete?
So the contractors all made clearly aware of that deadline when they bid. We had pre-bid meetings, specifically was brought up about the deadline and they all bid it with the intention. And there will be, you know, there's penalties for not.
Start dead of winter here in Michigan.
Potentially, it's, one of them wants, the one boardwalk contractor definitely would like to start. Because he can do removals, you know, he can do carpentry work in the winter, not ideal, but I mean, it doesn't, the weather doesn't necessarily stop him unless, you know, so.
That seems so hype, but maybe, I don't know, landscaping the four seventy-two, almost half a million, it's such a big percentage of the product.
Yeah, let me break it down a little bit because there is, there's some, there's some pieces to it. I still think it's hype, but I'll break it down. So in that, on the very east end, there was a rain garden that was in an infiltration basin we're going to do off that parking lot, which I really would like to do. But right now, EDA was okay with pulling that. That was a piece of landscaping, so that had, you know, piping manholes, you know, so that was kind of an expensive little piece there. The other end of the landscaping was include, it did include the outdoor classroom. So that was under landscaping, so it kind of, you know, it's more structural. So that was in there too, eating up some of that cost. But there was a landscaping, just your normal, what you expect landscaping component that I think was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that was basically, if you can picture the slope in front of West Shore Community College, from really the limits of their project on the west end. And so we talked to the contractor, he says he's going to look at some things, plantings. But really what we're going to do is just scale that down and reduce the quantity to around the area of the outdoor classroom. So that's, but the hundred and twenty grand for it, it just blew my mind. And we, we went out of our way with local contractors, we really wanted to bid. It is a federal grant, it's got prevailing wage. And some people get a little intimidated about, you know, these federal grants and working on them and they just, you know, didn't pursue it. So, so that was, that was the bid we got. But we are working at reducing that scope and the cost in it.
Is the college putting in anything for that area underneath where they want that classroom?
So, yeah.
So we really, the DDA committed when they did their, their TIF plan with the college was they were going to invest two hundred and fifty thousand into that area behind there. Originally it was going to be an art park. So we, we really leveraged those funds to get this grant and that was their, so that's why we worked with them. But that outdoor classroom, originally that was going to be a switchback, but that didn't make sense in that location, it just wasn't feasible. So in a way, they have, they have committed there. The one thing that they've wanted is some maintenance-free plantings there because that, it's just the slope and the grass there, it's just not, it's just not safe to be running a mower over that. So, yeah, in terms of they've committed, they're captured to the DDA and the DDA has agreed to use that money towards that area. And we've then used that and I think we're at three hundred and eleven thousand committed to that. So we've, I feel like we've met that obligation. We were, set up a meeting on Friday to talk to the different stakeholders about this, this plan.
Anybody else?
I think anything you could do to keep it the most maintenance-free.
Well, that was the.
Yeah, like, and I, it's, it's to be at that, we can't have a maintenance-free wood decking. But I understand the cost, but boy, that would be nice, it's.
Yeah, I think from a maintenance standpoint, you probably, you know, you'd be more looking at the composites of the PVC if you really wanted long. The other products we looked at would definitely have lower maintenance, the more dense products, they're treated different ways, they'll last longer. Even this, and so, and they'd have warranties on them. So we would love to get back to one of those warranty items, like even the Kebony kind of in-between product, that had a fifteen-year warranty on it. So that's, I think the, also, I think the, there was a fifteen-year warranty, they would honor a fifteen-year warranty on the upgraded treated product, that one I was talking about. So, but that's a hundred thousand dollars again, so we're already short, so we're just, you know, we got our wishes and our, and what's reality a little bit hitting us in the face here, so.
So by the next meeting, will you have met with those other stakeholders, like the foundation?
So I did send a note to meet with them on Friday to see if they're available or send a representative. And we'll go over basically this presentation with them. There has been an interest to, to help with some cer, with certain things, but yeah, we are, the timeline, it's pretty short right now. But I think we could continue to work with them even after the seventeenth if awarded.
Thanks, Sean.
Sorry to download all that on you. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks and thanks, Sean, for pulling it together.
The other departments? Ms. Roscoe?
I guess I'm wondering about the cardboard paper recycling. We could have an update on that?
Very, very timely question. We've, we've auctioned off, we've auctioned off all of our large equipment and surplus stuff. I, I believe there's an issue with one piece, but, but right, bottom line is where all that stuff is stored right now, all but one piece has been officially bought. They have through the end of this week to pick that, come pick that stuff up. And then that frees up the space and we've been in regular contact with PCA. So as soon as that space is open, they'll be bringing in one of the school recycling trailers. And then we'll be setting up two times a month where we'll open that up on a Saturday for four hours. That's how we're going to start. And then we'll, we'll be able to have a local site for people to bring their cardboard to. We'll see how that goes and see how much it's used and see if we need to extend the hours or add days. But that's the current plan and we were just in contact with PCA this morning, actually.
Are we going to have somebody watching those trailers because they're going to be throwing all this junk?
Yeah, I'm going to have a staff member there during the operation hours. And then we'll close it up all the other times.
And that's the reason why we picked that site is we have a fence, we can control access.
That's a gated, gated place, so.
Thank you.
Did Jeff blow you up there?
Sure.
Can I ask you, is that wall at Fifth Avenue, is it getting stress cracks in it?
I was, the planning, our Parks Commission alerted me to that, that it's cracked. Had some discussions with the engineers, I haven't, we, we haven't discussed the results of that.
I went down and took some pictures because people will call and be like.
Yeah, they alerted me. So we're investigating that, okay, but.
Just kind of, I don't know what you call it, a shout-out. There has been some indication that the Manistee Catholic site is open to community use. And keep in mind, that place has a natural football bowl. You know, it's an awesome facility and the last thing we want is it to become a blighted thing. So, you know, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, you know, as we do things. And I guess I'm, lastly, I'm going to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year because I won't be here next meeting. And I'm looking forward to doing good things for the city in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
You're done?
Yep, I'm done.
Bill, what are we doing with the gateway building? I'm getting, a lot of people, I go to lunch or any place, I'm getting, people are getting tired of looking at that, with the wall, the fence falling over and the signs blowing every time the winds come up.
What is that, Jim?
The gateway.
Oh.
You know, and somebody, they like to see something done and I know they got the money, I've already talked to everybody out there.
So I know we have another, we've been having more meetings with them lately, so I'm, I'm optimistic that it's moving forward. So we're, we're working with them, but I don't have specific dates or anything, but I'm, I think we're hearing the same things that you're hearing, so.
All right.
Anything else, Sean? No, I'm good, thank you. Ms. Roscoe? Anything? That's not. Oh, God, I'm sorry. Sorry. I knew what you meant, hey, at least I didn't call you Dave.
I don't, I, I just wanted to apologize for my tardiness, I was presenting at the school board meeting. And those guys know how to talk, so, but I, I want to be accountable to this team and for my tardiness.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just, it's slaybell week, everybody, great time of the year around this community. The citizens and the, you know, DPW does a great job on the, the decorations, looks great again. And I spent a little bit of time walking through downtown, waiting for my car to get serviced. Nothing bad. I have never noticed how much decorations the downtown businesses have done.
Yes, we do.
It is fantastic this year, if you have not had the chance to walk downtown and hopefully it's not too cold. It's just, you can't help but start hemming Christmas carols when you walk through the downtown. So good job, everybody, and yay, slaybell.
I think it's a good idea that the attorney isn't here, it's probably bad weather, I enjoy not driving up, but we are saving a little money. And so I think that was a step in the right direction, so continue just making little cuts, I think it's all good. And thank you for welcoming me to this council, it's been, it's going to be a great year.
I just hope everybody enjoys the weekend festivities and I will take a motion to adjourn.
I like that motion.